Of. Sorry, I gotta remember the date. Today is April twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. We're at Aqua School. And the agenda item tonight is the presentation of Ms. Alicia N. Perrin. We're gonna turn the floor over into to her so she could prepare her presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting evidence in regards to the Bridgeport Public Schools interim superintendent evaluation, A Glimpse at Executive Level Leadership. Today is April the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, and I am Alicia N. Perrin. On tonight's agenda, I will review sections one, two, and three of the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three instrument for assessing the effectiveness of the superintendent of schools. So tonight's agenda items include review of sections one, two, and three of the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three instrument for assessing the effectiveness of the superintendent of schools. Presenting data, presenting evidence from each of the three sections regarding superintendent actions. Shares data points and strategies for supporting content areas. Shares the foundational pillars from district strategic plan to move BPS in the right direction. So the first section is relations with the Board of Education. This section has six subsections, all entitled one dot one through one dot six. One dot one is relating a professional manner toward the board and each of its members. One dot two keeps the board informed on issues, needs, and operations of the school system. One dot three offers professional analysis and recommendations to the board for items of action requiring board action. One dot four interprets and executes the intent of board policy and directives. One dot five seeks and accepts constructive criticism of work. And one dot six accepts responsibility for maintaining liaison between the board and personnel, working towards a high degree of understanding and respect between the staff and the board. So evidence under one dot one relates in a professional manner toward the board and each of its members. Ms. Perrin, who was I, relates in a professional manner, working in partnership with the Board of Education. This is supported by email communications. Email inquiries made by members of the board are responded to within a timely manner with answers to inquiries. Updates are also provided as relative. There have been individual meetings held with board members to address their desires for board progression. So examples of that include in December of two thousand and twenty-two, Ms. Baptiste Perez, Mr. Benahan Grajales and Mrs. Kolovic, I met with them all during that timeframe. Mr. Lombard, who's a former board member I met with in January two thousand and twenty-three, and Ms. Castamere during March two thousand and twenty-three after her arrival. Keeps the board informed on issues, needs, and operations of the school system. So there are some examples that I've listed here as a reference. So the BACB BMA meeting with City of Bridgeport stakeholders on three, six, twenty-three. Curial and Classical Studies Academy Middle School Basketball Cancellation Communication, which was sent on three, twenty-four, twenty-three. Student attendance at Total Mortgage Arena Hockey Game Cancellation Due to Student Threat on four, six, twenty-three. The Roosevelt Cyberbully Cyberbullying Issue Reported on four, seventeen, twenty-three. The Khan Academy Visit at High Horizons Magnet and Hall Schools on three, sixteen, twenty-three. Cure for Kids Discontinuation Issue, three, twenty-one, twenty-three. And celebrations and positive communications are shared as well. Examples of this include Discovery Magnet and High Horizons Magnet Spelling Bee Winners on three, two, twenty-three. Magna Schools of America Principal of the Year, Mr. Jay Lip on three, two, twenty-three. Our District Science Fair Winners, three, twenty-one, twenty-three. Our High School Fear at Sacred Heart University on three, nine, twenty-three. Our Math Con Winners from the high school level on three, twenty-one, twenty-three. Debate Winners, the most recent on three, thirteen, twenty-three, and various athletic awards. So these two I put on the same slide because they related very closely to each other. One dot three offers professional analysis and recommendations to the board for items of action requiring board action. And one dot four interprets and executes the intent of board policy and directives. So the items that I listed here talk specifically about some of those things. The revision of policy five, one, three, one, which is discipline. This is something that we're currently working on through the Governance Subcommittee. Recommendation for revision of the control transfer policy. We did this in February. Recommendation to address inquiries surrounding BACB new construction from student body. And opportunities to testify regarding state legislator, example HB five, oh, oh, three, B. Also for one dot four, executes the intent of board policy and directives. Examples include cave recommendations and requirements for policy updates and working to implement new policy around new construction and building decommissioning. Under one dot five seeks and accepts constructive criticism of work. Received community stakeholder feedback regarding Frost and Hooker student relocation and acted to ensure that our entire learning community needs were met. Considering the diverse needs of the BPS community with respect to work constructs, the addition of a Saturday budget form was added. Board of Education recommendation to reorganize the office of the superintendent was implemented in late February two thousand and twenty-three to address the need for timely responses and preparation for materials for the board portal. Item one dot six accepts responsibility for maintaining liaison between the board and personnel, working towards a high degree of understanding and respect between the staff and the board. Ms. Perrin was part of an update of policy nine, seven, zero, one, which outlined the removal of superintendent approval for staff and board communication. Ms. Perrin meets with BEA, which is our teachers' union biweekly, and BCAS, our administrative union monthly, to provide space for open communication between the staff and board to collectively work to improve the educational landscape of BPS. High school basketball issue, New Haven and Bridgeport Public Schools closed game to the public. Also responded to CHS student needs regarding locked lavatories, which prevented student access that was presented in a board meeting. Responded to Fear Child Wheeler students' needs regarding the number of one session days for midterms. Also, through our Personnel Subcommittee, there are scheduled meetings with department heads and board members to provide an overview of department responsibilities. Section two, Community Relations. There are six subsections under this as well. Section two dot one seeks to gain respect in support of the community on the operation of the school system. And section two dot two solicits and gives attention to problems and opinions of all groups and individuals. So we have budget forums on February second, I mean, February two thousand and twenty-three, March second, and March twenty-fifth, all trying to gather, provide information to the community about the current state fiscal state of the Bridgeport Public Schools and how moving forward, we are going to be facing a fiscal cliff with the end of ESSR ARP dollars in September of two thousand and twenty-three. We also held a BACB BMA forum on February second, two thousand and twenty-three. This was in response to the community who wanted to know more information about environmental pieces as it was in regards to the building of this new site on the University of Bridgeport campus. There was also a Fear Child Wheeler student petition in regards to midterms on January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please let the record dope that Mr. Benahan has joined us in person. Good evening. We have our Personal Subcommittee, which is also department responsibilities. We've held two meetings thus far, March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, and April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Soliciting gives attention to problems and opinions of all groups and individuals. Some examples include soliciting gives attention to all problems from constituents in the BPS community that may be offered through telephone calls, email communication, or via in-person, and offers professional thoughts based on evidence and data. Sections two dot three and two dot five develops friendly and cooperative relationships in the community and works effectively with public and private agencies. So here, I just listed several different community agencies that I have met through during my time in the seat as interim superintendent. So if you see, we have meetings with Generation Now, Teach for America Relay, the Dalio Foundation, Build on, the Village Initiative Project, Bridgeport Neighborhood Trust, Representatives from the WNBITWA, who presented to our children. Trio, the Bridgeport Police Department, Bridgeport Promise, Books to Basketball, the Walter Lockett Foundation, Coach Dan, who provides free trust services for our students, members of the NAACP, and Elevate Bridgeport. This is not an all-inclusive, but these are some examples of some of the agencies that I have met through during my time. Two dot four participates as a community leader in public education. Some examples. So created community forum regarding the new construction of BACB BMA in response to community request. Attended the Alliance Gala, guest of Dr. Monet Ferguson in February two thousand and twenty-three. Attended the Caribe Sports Banquet in January two thousand and twenty-three. Was a member of the BEA Meet and Greet in February two thousand and twenty-three. The BE Black History Program held in Westport, Connecticut. I believe that was in March. Pack roundtables for our parents in the district, and these are ongoing monthly. I'm a board member of the Greater STEM Ecosystem for Bridgeport, Connecticut, periodically visiting programs like Hang Time, the Bridgeport Delegation Meeting that was held on April fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, and attendance at our Special Olympics game that was held at Harding High School on April fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Member of Community Educational Partnerships, which is a monthly meeting with various constituents from within Bridgeport and around Bridgeport to support initiatives as it relates to public school and opportunities for students. School Building Committee, monthly meetings which are ongoing. And the focus of most of these meetings thus far have been the new construction of BACB High School. Honored by Juneteenth of Greater Fairfield County for Excellence in the Educator Award, April two thousand and twenty-three. Attended the MLK celebrations at Mount Erie Baptist Church in January two thousand and twenty-three. Attended at the Dominican Day Flag Raising Ceremony in February two thousand and twenty-three and met with State Treasurer and Comptroller during their tour of financial literacy at Harding High School, April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Two dot six, effectively fosters parental engagement. Again, some examples include participating in PAC PTOSO roundtables. Partnered with building leaders to ensure that PAC PTOSO funds are spent in conjunction with PAC PTOSO leaders. Average of ninety-three percent expended at the high school level and ninety-eight at the elementary level as of April sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Participated with parents during district-wide science fear held at Aqua Culture School. Attended at the High School Fear at Sacred Heart University. Attended the Talented and Gifted STEM Fear held at Discovery Museum. Attended student debates at both the Pequot Library and the University of Bridgeport and attended the Black History Program at the Community Center, Trumbull Gardens. Section three, Personnel Management and Relationships. Five subsections are underneath this area, which include develops and executes sound personnel procedures and practices. Develops good staff morale by learning concerns of teachers and administrators. Is accessible and visible to staff, is effective in evaluating staff and holding staff accountable, offers professional analysis and recommendations to the board for personnel items requiring board actions. Please note that item three dot five is a repeat from section one, so you will see the very same items listed there. So under section three dot one, executes sound personnel procedures and practices. You'll see executed a plan to develop process guides to be utilized in the Office of Human Resources to outline consistent hiring practices. This was brought forth as a concern from both BEA constituents and BCAS constituents in regards to not being notified of certain spaces. So this is one of the first things that I tackled upon my arrival. Creation of Crisis Management Plan for Building Leaders. This was really an area of concern for our administrators, knowing the who, the what, the where, and why in the case of a crisis situation, making sure that all of our constituents were notified in a timely fashion about what the condition of our building, of our students, and what were next steps. Purchased a frontline system for use by Office of Human Resources and payroll. The system provides access to vetting potential new hires based upon qualifiers. Target date for implementation, July first, two thousand and twenty-three. This was an extremely important purchase, as I see it from this seat, because we, one of the things that we focus on here in Bridgeport Public Schools is creating a diverse work workforce. And as we look at the data through our DEI Subcommittee, we're seeing that there is a huge discrepancy amongst the amongst our students as well as our staff. So by utilizing this frontline system, we are able to really be able to go through and identify individuals who may be more culturally responsive, who may be more reflective of our student demographics. Purchased FMX system for use by facilities to monitor permits and fees for building usage. Target date for implementation is July first. One of the reasons this came about was talking about the use of our facilities and what are the fees associated. We incur several costs to be able to open up these buildings, whether it's in the evening or on the weekends or during summertime, to be able to pay for our security, our custodial staff, as well as basic utilities. And we need to be able to monitor this better to make sure we're incurring the correct revenue source and making sure we have an exact list of what's happening and how our buildings are being used and how much revenue that we are gaining through allowing them to be used by others in the community and outside constituents. Currently, I'm vetting the purchase of scribbles. And the purpose of this is to systemize transcript requests and employment verification, as well as generate a consistent revenue stream for the district. So currently, our system for being able to provide transcripts to past students or verify employment is done very differently, and we'll say it that way. Each high school has their own pricing guide that they're utilizing, and there is no solidified system that keeps all the information, which shows us who we provided transcripts to or employment verification, how often it's happened, how much money we've received for it. So as a way of being able to create a systematic approach, I'm looking at the purchase of software to be able to do so. Three dot two develops good staff morale by learning concerns of teachers and administrators. Upon coming into the interim superintendent seat, there were so many different pieces that I had to learn about from the district level. And trying to take that information and being able to communicate it to our building leaders, to our teachers, to our stakeholders, we needed a system to be able to do that and do that effectively. So biweekly, there is a district communication that's sent out through the Office of the Chief Academic Officer with updates from all departments and department heads. This includes celebrations of students and staff, information about assessment, things that we're moving to. IT shares information about progress that we're making. So it's extremely informative, and it provides a source of information for all stakeholders. Again, the biweekly BEA meetings that are held with the president of the union, Ms. Anna Baptiste, as well as the monthly BCAS meetings with their executive board are another way to be able to gather information around concerns and address them effectively. Staff communication sent in support of morale, which is extremely important. So some examples include December Vacation that was sent on twelve nineteen twenty-three. The Tyree Nichols tragedy in January, communication was sent out to staff. The Nashville, Tennessee tragedy in March, and the April Vacation. Why do I think these are probably some of the most important communications? Because it really talks about the social emotional, the social emotional stance of our staff. Oftentimes, when we get involved in looking at what's happening in a school district, we're always putting children first, as they should be. But we also need to be able to check in on our staff members to ensure that they're in the correct space to be able to deal with some of the emotions that may be presented through our students, through our parents, and be able to be of support. Section three dot three is accessible and visible to staff. School walkthrough visits to all schools have been underway since December two thousand and twenty-two. To date of our thirty-eight sites, I have visited twenty-eight and provided documented feedback to principals in regards to things that I seen, what was happening with students in the classroom, was your thinking visible, academic vocabulary use, bulletin boards, you know, staff and student interactions, and then next steps for improvement. I've attended several events at schools at the request of staff. So for instance, Career Day at Central High School in February. I was asked to speak to a group of seniors there. PAC PTOSO meetings, BACB High School. Mr. Benahan always makes sure that he lets me know, and I come out to celebrate and support the community. Holiday be celebrations at JFK Campus, Dunbar School, and District and School-based Science Fairs. So those are a few that I have attended thus far. Three dot four is effective in evaluating staff and holding staff accountable. Biweekly meetings are held with our senior leadership team to discuss the happenings of each department. So at these meetings, every director or executive director across the district comes and provides updates into regards to what's going on in the department. They talk about vacancies, staffing issues that they may be having, any major concerns of next steps for the department, any new ideas, curricula, or programming that they may be trying to implement through those are shared during those biweekly meetings. Department action plans have been created by department leaders and submitted to support the creation of a district strategic plan. Executive leadership share their individualized action plans to support the departments and the schools as well. And there are weekly meetings with executive lead of level leadership to discuss school-related issues and work on the district strategic plan. So when I'm talking about executive level leadership, that is our chief academic officer, our deputy superintendent, and our executive directors. Section three dot five offers professional analysis and recommendations to the board for personnel items requiring board action. So again, this is a repeat of one that was listed in section number one. And this again is a repeat, so a revision of policy number five, one, three, one, which is the discipline policy that we're currently working on for our upcoming governance meeting on May seventeenth. Recommendation to revise policy number five, one, one, six, A, which is the control transfer policy. Recommendation to address inquiries surrounding BACB new construction from student body and opportunities to testify regarding state legislature HB five, zero, zero, three, B. So I wanted to include some data. I know that this evaluation was not intended to cover the entire time, and we did make an amendment to that. But I did want to share some data trends that we have been exposed to thus far. So attendance data, this is as of three, two, twenty-three. Why? Because we haven't gotten the data from April as of yet, so I wanted to share that. So if you take a look at this slide, it shows you each and every grade level from grades K to twelve for Bridgeport Public Schools. In it, you see the chronic absenteeism rates for each of those grade levels. Oh, and they range from twenty-two percent up to, let's see, forty-two percent, I believe. Now, that's where they happened to be in March. But if you notice this last column where it's entitled change from last month, there has been a decrease across grades K to twelve at each grade level from last month. And those range from one percent to four percent. So this highlights some of the work that we've been doing, that we've discussed with our home visitors from LEAP and just trying to create better environments for our students, and it is indicative in this data. Again, on the same note, in regards to attendance, the following schools increased their specific grade level attendance rate by one percent when compared to last month. Collectively, these small improvements are moving our district in the right direction. So you see BMA, which is Bridgeport Military Academy, both grades ten and eleven. Biotech, which was one of our schools at the Fear Child Wheeler Campus, grade ten. Bataya grades kindergarten, first, and fourth. Edison, grade two. Geraldine Johnson, kindergarten. Hall, kindergarten and first grade. Helen, grade five. Curial, grade four. Tisdale, grade six. Marin, grade six. Madison, grade three. Multicultural, grade one. Dunbar, kindergarten and grade eight. Hooker, grade five. Waltersville, kindergarten. Harding, grades ten, eleven, and twelve, and cross first grade. District Bright Spots Attendance Report. So I wanted to bring this forward because I thought this was extremely important because this talks a little bit about what we're doing here and how we compare to our similar districts. So the column here on our left talks about the decrease of chronic absenteeism. We have decreased by entire district by three percent from last month, all right? Chronic absenteeism is decreased by three percent from last month for students identified with disabilities as well. So this is the second data point. It's not the same as the first. The first one is inclusive of all students. The second speaks specifically to students with disabilities. Chronic absenteeism decreased by ten percent from last month for students identified as students experiencing homelessness. Chronic absenteeism decreased by two percent from last month for students identified as multilingual students. School Bright Spots Attendance Report. Biotech, grade eleven and twelve, increased their attendance rate by three percent, so they surpassed others as well. This column here on the right talks about how we compare in the state of Connecticut to our DURGS, which are Hartford, New Britain, New Haven, and Waterbury. And when I say DURGS, that means those are school districts that are similar in the demographics and population as Bridgeport. So if you look here under chronic absenteeism, missing ten percent or more through March two thousand and twenty-three, you see that it's listed. So the state average is twenty-two percent. That's across the entire state of Connecticut. For our DURGS, it lists us out individually. If you notice, Bridgeport and yellow, it has thirty percent listed. Comparatively to Hartford at forty percent, New Britain at thirty-seven percent, New Haven at thirty-seven percent, and Waterbury at thirty-five percent. And please remember, we are currently the largest district in the state of Connecticut with over twenty-one thousand students to date. Extreme chronic absenteeism, which is in the last column to the right, and it talks about students who are missing twenty-five percent or more school. Okay, so right now, Connecticut, the average in the state of Connecticut is at zero percent. Bridgeport, too, is at zero percent. So we are right aligned with the state. And Waterbury, which is zero percent as well. Otherwise, our other DURGS are at one percent. This is a very hard measure to beat, but we are there. We are holding our own. So I think a lot of that goes to the communications that are happening at the school level through the work through our Director of Guidance, Carly Reyes Roca, who's working in collaboration with the LEAP Home Visitors and Rise App to help realize these changes. I wanted to highlight some data as well, so I picked a couple data points. This is reading data for students in grades K to four. This is the percent of students performing at or above grade level based on composite scores. So DIBELS, DIBELS is a benchmark assessment that is given three times a year for students in our grades K to four. So one of the important data points that I wanted to highlight here is if you look at the graph, you notice that there are three colors that are highlighted, yellow, blue, and a tannish color. And you see that it goes diagonally. That is cohort data, which is extremely important, which tells you that these students who were in kindergarten in year twenty-one, twenty-twenty and twenty-one, which is year one of implementation, only at this time of the year were at nine percent, all right, for proficiency. Those same students, as they went to grade one for twenty-one, twenty-two, were at twenty-four percent. And now in twenty-two, twenty-three are currently at thirty-five percent, and they're in grade two. So I think that's extremely important. Even if you look straight across with different cohorts of children, you'll see that there has been a constant increase of students meeting proficiency at these grade levels. If you look at the students who were in grade one in two thousand and twenty-one, eighteen percent of them were at proficiency. Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-six percent, and now twenty-two, twenty-three, thirty-three percent. Again, here, grade two, twenty-five percent in two thousand and twenty-one. Twenty-one, twenty-two, thirty-three percent, and twenty-two, twenty-three, thirty-nine percent. This slide talks about the Connecticut Right to Read Act. So this is something that this was legislature that was implemented to be able to make sure that we are doing everything feasible and possible to get our students to read at grade level by the end of grade three. This legislation came down during pandemic, and we are in full compliance. But some of the things that we're doing to support this is talks about support for teachers and school leaders. support for teachers and school leaders, that following structures have been established. So the Science of Reading PD, all right, so this is professional development that has been provided for teachers in grades K to three to really talk about how the brain works and is able to access information. And it informs how we teach our students. This professional development talks about, you know, phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary comprehension, instruction, universal screening. So that talks about the DIBL information that I just shared with you. That's the universal screener that we use in those grade levels. Purchased HQIM, what is that? High-quality instruction materials. So we purchased a reading wonders program to be able to provide that instruction for our scholars. Intervention and progress monitoring students, okay? So we talk about intervention. What is that? We have interventionists. You've heard we talk about, as well as Dr. Jenkins, Easy Teachers, which are early academic support interventionists that service our students in grades K to three. So when you see interventions, those are some of the supports that we have invested in through our ARC-ESR dollars. Progress monitoring schedules have been set at schools to be able to do this to students. So what does this mean? It means aside from the three benchmark assessments that take place throughout the course of the year, there are cycles where we are looking at specific data points. So maybe it's in phonics, maybe it's in fluency. It really depends on what the data says is a need for the child. And these children are monitored every six to eight weeks to see if they're progressing in the right direction. Coaching for teachers and leaders, which comes through. We've been partnering with PL, which is Partners for Educational Leadership. The Summer Reading Program. And Parent Notification of Students Reading Below Grade Level. Academic Supports. So things that have to happen to be able to support change. Systematic Changes to Consider. How we use time. Considering Scheduling Changes at School Level. So one of the things that has come to the forefront during this time, as we discuss what's happening at schools, is, you know, how are we utilizing our schedules and our times to be able to make the best impact? We do not have a systematic approach for scheduling across the district, but we have engaged in the process of making recommendations to staff to be able to make these changes. And this is what we're looking at doing again for next school year, to align schedules across the district as best that we can, so we can create an opportunity for small group instruction, which is extremely method, extremely important method of instruction for our scholars, so they get that small group attention, all right? Professional Development for All Staff. So grades K to six have received professional development on small group instruction and how to use assessments to inform instruction. And this has been done in collaboration with the Hill for Literacy. Leveraging Writing to Support Literacy Learning in Grades Seven to Twelve. So in January, we engaged in the process of creating, we're getting students in grades seven to twelve to embark upon writing. One of the things that our students definitely struggle with, and that was done by having them work on specific writing prompts and having those writing prompts scored by Marco Learning. And it was an outside agency to be able to talk about where we need to improve writing for students in grades seven to twelve. Further discussion in this area talks about providing additional support specifically in grades six to eight through the use of empowering writers as well, moving forward. Extended School Hours, School Level Programs, Early Reading Success for Students in Grades K to Three. That is our summer program.
Okay, board members, I apologize for the technical delay. We're going to get started, and I was here on slide twenty-five, and I had just finished up talking about the extended school hours and the school level programs and the early reading success for our grades K to three. For Technology Support, we are using Lexia Core Five, Lexia English for our multilingual learners, as well as Reading Plus for our students in grades nine to twelve. Jeff, you may switch the slide. So strengthening the academic core. What does this look like across our various contents, and how will we achieve this goal? Jeff?
So one of the things that I know I've spoken about during my tenure as interim superintendent is the need for a district strategic plan. So I have been working diligently with my executive directors, chief academic officers, and deputy superintendent to start the creation of this. And we have identified four pillars to be able to start that will house and umbrella this work. So pillar number one, teaching and learning. BPS will engage in creating a culturally responsive educational experience for children that will solidify opportunities to equitably access curriculum aimed at preparing students for career and college readiness by, and that by will have several objectives underneath it. Pillar two, Operations, Systems, and Structures. BPS will develop systems that center equity and drive the continuous improvement of resource allocation, communication strategies, leadership development in the recruitment and retention of staff by. Pillar three, Parent, Family, and Community Engagement. BPS will promote equity to ensure that all families and community members have equal opportunities to participate in their child's education, regardless of race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, or language background by. And pillar four, Equitable Learning Environments. BPS will collaborate with students, faculty, staff, and families to create nurturing and safe learning environments that prioritize stakeholders' sense of belonging and relationship building, well-being, and equity. And I forgot the word by. But those are the four overarching pillars that we are creating objectives around to be able to do this strategic work.
Jeff?
Multi-tiered Systems of Support, which also we refer to as MTSS. This is a support system that's extremely important to be implemented throughout content levels. So it starts off with universal screening three times a year. So we talked and gave an example of that in regards to the DIBL screener. Use of Data to Inform Instructional Decisions. That is the only way we should be making decisions about how to modify curriculum or impact instructional strategies. PD, Professional Development, to make sure high-quality, evidence-based instruction is available. Administrators monitor that high-quality instruction is provided. Teachers deliver high-quality instruction. Additional support is provided if staffing is available. Families are engaged in the instructional plan. And progress monitoring occurs between sessions. Supportive structures are needed for people to create improved reading as well as other content areas' performance.
Jeff?
Mathematics. So here is a snapshot of HMH Growth Measurement Assessment. This is for students in grades two to eight. And this is the percentage of students at or above grade level, all right? So if we look at this, it shows you we're in the darker red or pink, whatever you like to call it, where they were at the beginning of the year. And this is the percentage of students at or above grade level in each grade level. And you see where the students are as of the middle of the year monitoring session. So there has been growth across all of these grade levels, which is showing that we are utilizing some of the right strategies to move in the right direction.
And Jeff?
In order to support math, we want to have specified improvement strategies. We work with district personnel to modify the teaching schedule of math classes from a semester to a year to provide ample time for students to learn concepts, specifically algebra, geometry, and algebra two. We're monitoring the implementation of the WIN block, the What I Need block, at all schools. Teachers working with small groups to address students' needs to access tier-one instruction and usage of computer learning systems and data. Continuing to provide professional development for all administrators and teachers to implement core math programs with fidelity at all schools, into math and into AGA program. This needs to include walkthroughs at all schools to provide direct feedback and support to administrators. Lengthening the mathematics period, where possible, for students in grades seven and eight classes to sixty minutes to implement a WIN block, which is the What I Need block, which would provide time for intervention.
Jeff?
Creating Performance Tasks and Projects to Make Mathematics Curriculum More Spiral to Enable Students to Use Math Knowledge Using Real-Life Experiences. Adapting a Model for Lead Teachers to Support One Content Area Only. Training Mathematic Lead Teachers to Be Model Mathematic Educators Into Lead District Professional Development and Mathematics Content, Pedagogical Practices, Looking at Data to Inform Instruction, and Diagnosing Misconceptions. Ensuring that Schools Utilize Data Collected to Inform Instruction and School-Based Professional Development. Continue to Support Schools in Hiring, Training, and Retraining Certified Staff. Adapting Parts of the Building Thinking Classrooms Methodology into our curriculums, especially in high school. This specific bullet point is in reference to PD that our mathematical teachers went to at the beginning, no, the end of last month by Peter Littlejow, who talked about really making thinking visible for our students in our mathematical classrooms. And really, how is that relevant to their learning and how their minds work? And a lot of information came out of that that was, will be implementable for our scholars and something that our teachers were truly vested in.
Jeff?
So this data here, this is Next Generation Science Standard data. All right, so this is the one that we had. Our students are just finished taking this in grades five. So we don't have it for this school year. We won't have it until next year. But this is just a breakdown of where our students have been. Eighteen, nineteen, of course, nineteen, twenty, they did not take it. Twenty-twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two. All the information in the red shows those are the percentage of students who did not meet across those years. Yellow was, it's approaching, and green and blue shows it where it succeeded. So if you see eighteen and nineteen, we were at approximately almost twenty-four percent of students who were met or exceeded, all right? Then that number was greatly reduced in twenty-twenty-one, coming back from the pandemic to, I'm gonna say approximately sixteen percent, because I cannot see the numbers at the very end. And now we did start a rebounding in twenty-one, twenty-two with approximately seventeen percent. So though we have a very far way to go, we are starting to make a rebound and gain some of that knowledge. Remember, Next Generation Science Standards, we are only tested in grades five, eight, and eleven.
Jeff?
Science Supports. Each school has a designated stipend-earning lead teacher devoted to science. In collaboration with Discovery Education's Professional Development Series, we are training these lead teachers to be the first level of support for our K to five teachers. Professional Development Aimed at Student Performance, Data, Teacher Needs, and Science Fair Support. Scope and Sequence Guides Align with NGSS for Students in Grades K to Eight. And General Science, Ninth Grade Curriculum Revision is to align with NGSS in link to DE Resources, which is Discovery Resources.
Jeff?
Science Supports Continued. Using Formative and Summitive Assessments to Target Student Deficiencies. Providing Interactive Hands-on Lab Experiences in the Classroom. Collaboration with colleagues with sharing high-impact instructional strategies. Using Task-Design Templates to Help Organize Content Instruction, Activities, and Barriers to the Learning Concepts. Disaggregating Test Questions and Determining the Content Knowledge Students Should Know and Be Able to Do.
Jeff?
And lastly, professional development sessions were based on teachers' needs, interest in high-quality instructional practices, which include Assessment and NGSS, How to Monitor Student Learning, Mystery Science: Navigating the Science Platform, Bio-Mimicry: Using Nature to Develop Science Fair Projects, Science Fair Central: Developing Strategies to Help Students Present Experimental or Research-Based Projects, Instructional Practices: Using Task-Design Templates, and Vertical Collaboration with Evidence-Based Practices for Grades Seven to Twelve. The next slide just gives a glance at some of the facilities projects that we've completed April twenty-twenty-three. This is a huge piece for us because as we enter summer months and we're dealing with higher temperatures in buildings that are aging, we're trying to tackle them the best way that we can with the allocated funds that we have through ARC-ESR. So during April twenty-three, I had a big push with Mr. Garcia to do some heavy lifting work. So what are some of the things that were tackled during that vacation? City Hall payroll renovation, Blackham Outdoor Classroom, Hallen Parking Lot, Curial First and Second Floor Ceiling Tiles, and the Reed Chiller.
Jeff?
So here, I just have different photos of that work and what it looked like during that time through the work of the Facilities Department.
Jeff?
This is the Blackham Outdoor Classroom that we have. This was installed during April vacation. We have two more coming to other schools in the district. It gives the students an opportunity to learn about hands-on science outside of the buildings. Mr. Trey Bressi, you trying to see that Blackham Outdoor Classroom? It's pretty cool. It really is. But it's such beautiful weather, but it gave an opportunity for that, but we are doing that to other sites as well.
Jeff?
This is the Hallen Parking Lot that needed to be paved, and it was done during that time.
Jeff?
Curial First and Second Floor Ceiling Tiles. So it just showed the removal and then the reinstallation that was done there.
Jeff?
The Reed Chiller. So that is going to be a huge, huge help as the warmer months approach. Reed is a large school, and this, we should not experience too many issues with having this new chiller. So that is wonderful. Additional Facilities Projects that were worked on during April. The Regrading by Playground at JFK, I mean JFK Campus, excuse me. Park City Magnet, Exbestos Abatement and Pipe Replacement, Ceiling Installation, HVAC Filter Changes District-Wide, CPR Face First Aid and OSHA Ten Training for All Head Custodians, Barnum, Waltersville, and Johnson Lighting Upgrade, Fairchild Wheeler Campus Chiller Renewal, Tisdale. This is their HVAC system that was installed and checked to make sure it worked appropriately. And Columbus, Bridgeport Learning Center, Hooker's Game, ADA Accommodations. So they worked extremely hard during the month of April to realize those different things. Now, I'm not going to have Jeff go through all of these, but he can't flip. So this is just an example, I titled it, we are Bridgeport Schools, of different things that we have worked on throughout the year. We had a holiday toy drive, a coat drive, and these are some of the public displays that are around the city. There's right here on one of our buses that talks about our LEAP program here, and also some of the notices that are out there to talk about brighter futures begin today, and attendance makes the difference. And we all know that if you're not here, you sure enough can't learn. So Jeff, you could just flip through to the next one? Jeff, okay. SAT Prep, which we, uh-oh, Jeff, go back now. Hold on. All right, so SAT prep that we have there, that's something that we offered to our students prior in preparation for the PSATs and SATs. Information about immigration when it came through our newcomer center, as well as as well as our bilingual department. And this is a similar picture to the one that we just saw, however, it is in one of our native languages here in the city, okay?
Jeff?
And these, there's quite a few slides here, but these are just different events that I've attended during my time here at Bridgeport Public Schools as the interim superintendent, as being visible in the community, working with board, working with students, working with staff to try to create an environment that's stronger, closer, and better. I thank you for your time this evening.
Let's give it up for Ms. Parent. Virtual hand clap. At this moment, what we're going to do is, board members, we are not going to discuss the presentation as of tonight, but you're more than welcome. I am going to update the forums that will be in your portal, so you can be
forums that will be in your portal so you can be able to, uh, prepare to score those. And, um, this will be added to an agenda, um, in the near future, uh, to further discuss this. But that is all for this evening. I just wanna make sure the record reflects anyone that was not here prior to the meeting, but I believe that's everyone. Is that Mrs. Akalavik? Okay, Mrs. Akalavik is back. So, um, I will now just entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, move by. I'm gonna give it to Joe. You can second it, Albert. Second it by Albert. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Here and on every, everyone have a good night, and Ms. Parent will upload this, uh, to the portal as well. Good night, everyone.